President of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, October 21st, 2021. We are meeting at one government center in the first floor hearing room. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Fall River Government TV, Mr. Michael Ferreira is recording both a video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Our recording secretary this evening is Christine Alex, the lady to my right. Present this evening are permanent members John Frank, Jim Corkins, Joe Pereira, Dan Dupe, and alternate member Ricky Sahadi. Also in attendance is the Director of Planning, Mr. William Kenny, the man to the far left, along with the Assistant Director of Planning, Ms. Young. Christine, have all petitions to be considered and properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals in Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A as amended?
Yes.
I declare the October 21st, 2021 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the board, including the petitioners, abutters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the chairman. The board's rules and regulations direct the board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the zoning board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning board specific matters at the end of the meeting. I think there may be a sign-up sheet in the back if anyone wants to wait, to do with the, who would through with the agenda items, and you can address the board on anything that you'd like to concerning zoning-specific topics. I disclose that an official copy of the four of the zoning ordinance is available at the city clerk's office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. I also disclose that a new recodified edition approved by the planning board and city council in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A, Section 5, now with this red grapefruit cover, is the official copy. We will start with Agenda Item 01. Unfortunately, this is an item that I cannot listen to. The Secretary, Jim Corkins, is going to chair this one. So Agenda Item Number 01, Jim, I'll step out, you take care.
Very good, thank you. Agenda Item 01, Angel Estrella Moreno. This item actually was started back in July and was heard by the board, and at that time it was voted to table the issue until the August 19th meeting. For additional information, at the August 19th meeting, there was not a, five members available for the quorum, and it was extended one more month, and at that meeting, there wasn't a quorum present, so it was unable to be heard, and we will now hear from it.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dan Aguirre. I'm a senior project manager at SciTech Civil and Environmental Consultants, Inc., with addresses here in the city at 10 Purchase Street. Here this evening on behalf of the property owner, Angel Estrella Molina, who is here sitting to my right, with regards to the real estate at 417 East Main Street. And as Mr. Corkins had stated, this petition was initially presented to you back in July of this year, and at that time, we had a discussion where the board asked, or we asked, to table the matter so that we could reduce the number of units that were being proposed at that time. At that hearing, Member Sahadi made a motion that that table be allowed to happen, but that we would submit a revised plan, revised application, and I believe re-advertising, it's been so long, but I believe that was the case with the proper revisions, rather than just act on the revised petition at that meeting. So we're back to you today with a revised petition, which basically takes the proposal that you all reviewed at that time, from an eight-unit apartment building down to a six-unit apartment building. But for the sake of history, because it's been a few months, I'll just give you a quick little rundown of where we were at and what we discussed at that time. This is an 8,320-square-foot parcel that sits in the A2 apartment district at 417 East Main Street. The lot has 52 feet of frontage, and on it is a very large commercial building/warehouse that has two apartment units above on the second floor of the front portion of the building. This property was taken by the city for tax-taking, maybe about a year or so ago, and was sold at auction to the current owner, who is here this evening on behalf of this petition. So we have this very large structure in this A2 district where we have a commercial building, and a commercial use is not allowed in this A2 district. So when the applicant purchased the property, we had a discussion regarding the best use moving forward to renovate this building. And at that time, with the size of the building, with some renovations that could be made, the proposal was again to be an eight-unit building. What's very interesting about this building is that there is an existing driveway and a garage door that leads to an open warehouse section on the first floor of the rear of this building. And during the initial presentation, we had proposed that we would be creating eight off-street parking spaces in that garage space, which is shown on your plan. That is still part of this petition today. During that hearing, there were, was a number of conversations and comments made from some of the neighboring and abutting properties with regards to off-street parking. And during that discussion, we came to the conclusion that a reduction in units from eight to six would be a more viable project and still allowing the eight off-street parking spaces. And our argument at that time, and still is today, that currently there is no off-street parking, and that would be off-street parking that would be required for two apartment units and a commercial use in a very large commercial building. So our proposal will now create eight off-street parking spaces and basically eliminate the need for any commercial parking on the site or in the neighborhood and on the streets. So there should be an overall reduction in the amount of impact that this property has with regards to parking along East Main Street. In addition to that, we would be removing a commercial use, which is a non-conforming use, and bringing this property closer into compliance with the bylaw as it is in apartment building or a proposed apartment building in an A2 apartment district. The uniqueness in the shape of this parcel and the uniqueness of the building itself is what provides the hardship standard that we feel we meet, that the board could move and move this petition forward. If you have any questions, or if you don't remember anything that we discussed at the last hearing or this one, I would be more than glad to answer any of the, any questions that you might have.
Yeah, as I recall, one of the major concerns was the proximity to the next property and the safety of exiting out of the street. Have you examined that issue?
We did, and again, it's an existing driveway used for commercial purposes. So what we would offer is that there, it's no more of a detriment than the existing driveway and the existing parking or vehicular travel that would take place for the commercial apartment use that's currently on the property. It's a pretty quiet street. This will allow to get vehicles off the street that currently use this property, and that would use that in the future. So through site plan review, if there are any concerns with regards to any signage or striping on East Main Street itself, we could address those comments during site plan review.
Dan, there was also a question about the width of the driveway.
That's correct. And again, the driveway currently meets the standards for being able to get a vehicle in there. If you go to the site, you'll actually find that there's about a dozen vehicles, or have you taken off? There's about a dozen junk vehicles already parked in there. So is it a 20-foot-wide driveway? Absolutely not. It's a single, single-vehicle, one-lane driveway that would provide access in and out of that parking area. And what we ensured was that if you look on the plan itself, the parking area within the building itself, the spaces and the aisle width do meet the requirements for off-street parking in the City of Fall River. The existing driveway is an existing driveway with no ability to make it any bigger. It goes right up against the existing building, right up to the property line to the south.
So the question remains, what is the width of that driveway?
It's like, I'm sorry, it's like between nine to 10 feet wide.
I would say it's about nine feet wide.
And the width of the garage door that enters underneath the building?
It's an eight-foot garage door. And it's not under the building, it's on the first floor of the building.
On the first floor.
Yeah, yeah. It's not a subterranean garage.
But the swing radiuses within that parking area do meet standards?
Yes, because what ends up happening is although it doesn't show here, there is a sidewalk area of about eight feet wide, just like any other driveway that you would have in any other single-family or multifamily home in the city, you're not supposed to park within eight feet of a driveway. That's the law. So if people abided by the law and didn't park up to the end of the granite curb, yes, there is more than ample room to move in and out of that area.
Thank you.
And the underneath parking is wide enough the cars will be able to turn around and they'll come out face-first.
That is correct, yes, and that's what I stated. So if you look at the plan, we do have a 22-foot aisle width and the standard 18-foot parking space.
Members of the board, any further questions? Is there anyone here in favor of this proposal? Is there anyone opposed to this proposal? All right. Going with tradition, we'll start in the back corner and go across and then back.
Ms. Ma has submitted a letter, which I believe is on file, but I'm just a little nervous to speak, so everything that's written in that original letter still validates the feelings.
Yes.
I believe.
Well, we'll see if everything is covered under it or we can read it again. While we hold that until we get the rest of the comments.
My comment still remains the same. I think six units are still too many for that area. You know, again, the parking is certainly a concern. If the board has a chance to go by there and see the property, I think it would really speak volumes to, you know, versus the diagram that you have before you. Just thinking snow, you know, and having those residents, six of them, if that's allowed by the board, to go in and out of that area, you know, thinking for a snowstorm, they're not going to want to park in that area, in that garage, or whatever the parking area, you know, and we're located to one side of the street. East Main has painted spots, so again, that's still like a huge concern. Another thing is, is just putting that many people in, in an area, like there's no yard, there's no greenery, not even a tree. We have neighbors from behind on Slade Street that complain that there are bricks constantly falling into their yards. I don't know what the rules are in regards to building, if the city building inspector has to say yes or no, like I don't know if he has to approve these things beforehand, but, you know, a lot of the feelings of the neighbors is just that that building is just not structurally sound to have apartments on top. And I just think that you're going to take a really nice area and just congest it with too many apartments there, so I would just ask the board to reject the plan.
Thank you. I forgot to ask you, if you do, identify yourself for the record.
Sure. Monica Souza, 411 East Main Street. I live on the abutting property.
Mr. Chairman, can we do one at a time to response?
What you would like to do.
Sure, if I could, please, thank you. So with regards to snow and snow removal, I don't know who wouldn't want to park in a garage when there was snow outside, where everybody else up and down the street does not have a garage to park in. This would be a property where these tenants would be afforded off-street parking where snow would not be an issue. So I don't see that as an argument with regards to off-street parking. With regards to the total number of units in that neighborhood, there are multiple properties that have similar units on less land. We have a six-unit building on 6,600 square feet of land. We have a seven-unit building on a 3,200-square-foot parcel of land. A number of three-family dwellings as well, up and down the street, all on non-conforming parcels to this A2 district. And it's very clear that we are dealing with the hardship of an existing structure. That's very important. We're not asking to build this footprint on this piece of land. We're looking to renovate this building, to keep bricks from falling on neighboring properties, to make sure that the building is structurally stable. And yes, this will go through the building department, excuse me, for the application of a building permit, and he will ensure that the existing building is rehabbed to the point that it needs to, and any construction moving forward brings into compliance with Massachusetts Building Code. So the renovation of the building, and I would implore you, if you haven't gone by the property, go look at this dilapidated property that the city took as being a blighted property, sold at auction to be redeveloped in a manner very similar to this. So I think those responses can handle at least that or butters comments, so if you'd like to continue on, and we'll just do one at a time.
Yes. No, next.
I agree with what Monica just said.
Could you identify yourself, please?
My name is Sophia. Sophia Hunt, I'm 448 East Main.
Thank you.
It's not enough land to build maybe six apartments. I don't think it's enough land and too small, and we bought a house there last year, so many things going on. There's accidents, people drive crazy, the area is small. Where they want to build six units apartment is too small, and it's going to be too much problem, too much chaos over there. It already is, but it's going to be more. Today, police called again today, people, accidents, people driving speeding, and it's not enough room. That's how I feel, a land to build six units.
Dan, did you?
It's worth, I don't have anything else to add with regards to that. I mean, that's just similar comments.
Next, please. Or behind you, I think. No.
Are you here, Father?
Oh, I'm sorry. Good, good catch.
All right, my name is Todd Beck. You know, I live at 403 East Main Street, and I'd just like to add, like she just said, the congestion with more people, more traffic, and the, you know, the purpose of this board and this, you know, I'm going to highlight the congestion and then the safety, you know, the longer you have to walk, obviously, to find a parking spot or to get to your vehicle or to get to your home is going to, you know, cross the street, doing anything forever, it leads to a safety issue. Obviously, convenience, because where we can park now, close to home, we might not be able to with additional, like they're talking six units, six cars, but if you have a husband and wife, boyfriend and girlfriend, that now goes to six more cars on the street. And the thing about the driveway, I don't know if it's mentioned in her letter, is there are gas pipes feeding her house that are in that driveway. So if it's nine feet wide to property line to building, I don't know, is that the gate width? But her pipes, the gas meters and everything are in that driveway, so that's a matter that's going to be addressed probably with the gas company. And then, you know, I had an incident where, you know, and anybody familiar with Fall River and what's going on with all the apartments that are coming in? There was an issue back in the summer where I called the police for four hours, and they didn't have enough police to come to our area. Now, there's no guarantee with all this increase of population that our public safety will be increased according with all the new residents coming into the city. So that's another thing I thought of, you know, we just want to keep building people, bringing people in, which I'm in no way against progress, but at the same time, safety, your personal safety comes first, so we also have to get charity that as all these people come in, our public safety, fire, and police going to increase with all these new people coming in. So I'm just, you know, congestion, way of life as it is, yeah, it's an eyesore, but, you know, and then where he says, you know, our structures don't conform, but our, every structure is built before these, these new rules that I, what I gather from it. So according to grandfather, there should only be two units going in that property.
If I can?
Yes.
So again, just going back to the parking scenario, we currently have a pre-existing non-conforming building, approximately 6,000-square-foot footprint, that has two apartments and a commercial use that use on-street parking. We are now going to change the use in that building, provide eight off-street parking spaces, and eliminate the need for any commercial traffic or parking on East Main Street. I can't for the life of me see how you can pose an argument that congestion will be increased from this proposal than what currently exists on the site. And again, it's very important that we have a non-conforming building. That's the hardship. Just as the gentleman said, that they have non-conforming uses, he's 100% right. These homes were all built, these buildings were all built at a different time. But the hardship is that this building exists, and that's what allows us to come before this board and ask you to move forward.
Yes, sir.
All right, so if there's eight, eight parking under a six-unit block, that still doesn't, the possibility of two, two or more cars per resident, so I had my, my two kids live with me and my son's girlfriend, we had four cars in my apartment. Who's, there's no guarantee. So you add four more residents to that block, and that's nowhere to park.
Let's look at it this way, if we're adding four new apartments, let's look at it that way, we're adding eight new parking spaces, that's two per unit, that meets the zoning requirement. The two apartments that are currently there park on the street, let's say they'll always park on the street, but the ones that we are now creating, so we're getting all the commercial traffic off, and we're providing two units per unit for the four uni, four new units that were being asked of you today.
I think we need to move to the next one. Yes.
Hi, my name's Pauline Ganyan, and I live at 1,004 Slade, which abuts the property, okay? The bricks from that building are constantly falling in my yard. I could build something with all the bricks that are falling off of that building. There are trees growing out of the roof of that building. The back of the building is a jungle. I mean, it's just all trees that, they were weeds that turned into trees. Nothing has ever been kept up there. The building itself is a rat motel. They're in and out of there constantly. I won't even go out at night in my own backyard because of the rodent situation. I'm just concerned, even if they do build on top of there, if something's going to happen where that building isn't going to hold it, and people are going to, going to get hurt or die. That's my biggest concern.
Just in a quick response, if, if they don't want something done to the building, they don't want it rebuilt, they don't want it rehabbed, then it can allow to be, stay the way that it is, and bricks can continue to fall, the jungle can remain, the rats can remain, and the city will ultimately take it for tax purposes again. So it can sit the way that it is, or the property can get sold to a developer at auction who's willing to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in this building to revitalize the property, but it requires us to come through you first.
One, yes.
Yes. My next question is, then, before you start any renovation on fixing that, are you going to take into consideration the rodents that are living in there? Are you going to tent it and bomb the inside to get rid of all those rodents? Or are you just going to build and let the rodents run all over the place like they're doing now?
No, so through the, through the health department and through the building department and the building permit process, there is baiting and abatement, rodent abatement that needs to take place. This is the Zoning Board of Appeals that deals with zoning issues, not rats, not bricks falling, not jungles and backyards. But what the board can do is move the petition forward in a positive manner so that those conditions are eliminated.
Is that back dead space area going to be cleared out?
It'll be cleaned up, absolutely, yeah. There'll be a, there'll be a rear door to the parking garage, and you will be able to get out and to use that space, absolutely.
Okay, moving over, anyone else in that row? Is there anyone else here that wanted to speak on this? Okay, we had this letter that came in for our first meeting, and I just remind you that when they wrote this letter, it was under the original proposal of eight units, so take that into consideration. My name is Augusta Motta. My wife, Deborah, and I own and live at 427, 429 East Main Street. Our property, directly our north side is the south side. We would like to inform the board that we strongly oppose item number four, it was at that time, for several reasons. This is way too much of a project for the neighborhood to absorb. We live in a densely populated neighborhood where parking on the street is already difficult to add to the problem. There would certainly be an increase of visitor vehicles to the area, and it is likely that some or several of the unit residents would have more than one vehicle in the household. Having eight off-street parking spots entering and exiting from a somewhat hidden driveway would create a dangerous situation for pedestrians. They would have little time to react to this traffic even if someone would be seriously injured, especially with cell phone distractions. It is approximately 13 feet from our building to theirs where the driveway is proposed, of which we own three feet of each building, over and over again on a daily basis. There will be car exhaust fumes and increased noise and a potential for hazard if the project is allowed. It would most certainly be, affect the environment of our guests and tenants. We are also confused by the question on the hardship claims by the applicant. We have lived in this neighborhood for over 30 years and have no plans to leave. We're talking with several of our neighborhoods about the proposal for the property. Presently, water floods into this property due to this neglect. We all agree that the property needs to be fixed up. We just want a project that would add to our neighborhood, not one that would create more problems. For this reason and possibly others, we respectfully ask the board to reject and deny item four. Sincerely, Augusta Motta and Deborah Motta. Mr. Kenny, any comments?
I don't have any more comments.
Can you tell me how many bedrooms there are going to be?
There'll be no more than two bedrooms per unit. Some of them will probably be ones. We haven't gone to that extent of dealing with an architect or spending that money until we get zoning relief, but to be capped at two bedrooms per unit, we would not be opposed to.
Any other comments from the board? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant.
John Frank makes a motion to grant?
With the condition of cap of two-bedroom units, no more than two-bedroom units, no more than six units. The back area needs to be cleared and...
We'll landscape it or patio it or something.
Cleared would be the best description.
Yeah, it'll be well-maintained.
Eight off-street parking. No construction, there's no second floor going on the front part of the building, correct?
Just to the back.
Just to the back.
Yeah, just to the back. Because the front now is where the two apartment... Because the front now is where the two apartments.
Right, right, right. That's my motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
With those conditions, I'll second.
Rick Sahady seconds the motion. Those in favor, John Frank?
Aye.
Yes. Dan Dupree?
No.
No. Rick Sahady?
Yes.
Joe Perera?
No.
Jim Cawkins, yes. The motion does not carry.
Thank you very much for your time. Much appreciated.
Are you next?
Yes?
Just a point of clarification, do we need, on every motion, do you need four votes to pass?
Yes.
Rather than a majority?
Yes, we need a supermajority.
Supermajority, right.
Five-member board.
Supermajority.
Supermajority. There are certain, there are certain items in our ordinance that provide for less than that, but those petitions have not, this was not one of those.
Supermajority.
Supermajority, four, four votes of yes, and if the four-member board has to be unanimous, five-member board, four, one can say no. Agenda item O2, KAT Management LLC, care of Jeffrey P. Maderas Esquire, 627 South Main Street, lot G534. This was tabled from our September 16, 2021 meeting. This is a variance request pursuant to section 86482. And 86482 is just the powers of the board to exercise the authority to grant variances to convert an existing non-conforming structure from a club restaurant into a multi-unit, mixed-use property consisting of 11 one- and two-bedroom units, two office units, and a private executive club lounge in the basement, waiving all dimensional requirements, sidelines, and setbacks in a BL district, and varying, varying parking requirements if necessary.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For identification, my name is Jeffrey P. Maderas. I'm an attorney located here in the city of Fall River with a law firm of Burke, Espinola, and Van Colen at 120 Purchase Street, Florida, Mass. With me also is Dan Agia from Sitech, who had prepared the variance plan for KAT. One of the principals of KET is also here. He is going to man our easel like the lovely Vanna White, but that would, so with that being said, I'm sure anyone that has lived in Fall River for a long period of time or even a short period of time has heard about the Academica Club with regard to their steak sandwiches and so forth. The Academica Club has been closed for some time due to a water issue that occurred a few years ago and then ensuing litigation. The building has been vacant and in a state of flux. It is gutted on the first floor. That's basically an exterior representation of the Academica as it stands today. It's a historical building. It was built in the late 1800s. It was used as a moose meeting hall, a club hall. First floor, as you know, is the Academica Restaurant. The second floor is an amphitheater, and the third floor is a mezzanine. So with regard to our petition, when we get to the hardship, that factor alone and the way the building is gutted, it's currently obsolete. It's an obsolete building. So the proposed variance is for the 11 units, small office space on the first floor, and the executive club lounge in the basement. That would allow us to utilize the complete structure as it stands. My client has purchased several buildings in the city of Fall River that have been burnt for fires. He has a very good relationship with the building inspector. He has rehabbed approximately five buildings here in the city and rebuilt burnt structures. He does have a familiarization with construction as a supervisor. So the first, rendition on the first floor is to have the three units, on the first floor there would be one one-bedroom unit and two two-bedroom units, with the office space being in the front where the entrance foyer is. When we say office space, KAT is going to utilize that office space. It's not going to be rented out. It's just to utilize the space to the fullest extent that they wanted to have an office located here in the building. There is an operating, there will be a constructed elevator towards the back of the building with the stairway for handicap access. On the second floor, we are proposing two one-bedroom units and two two-bedroom units. So if you can kindly point out the one-bedroom units.
One bedroom? That's one bedroom. This is two bedroom. This is one bedroom.
Okay, so that would be converting the current amphitheater into the living space. On the third floor, we are proposing two one-bedroom units and additionally two two-bedroom units. It would probably mirror the, it would mirror the same as the second floor. We propose the executive club lounge, if you want to put that up, please. The reason why we propose an executive club lounge in the first floor is there is currently a working kitchen downstairs in the first floor. It is a large, open area, so we would like to have that area to act not as a restaurant but as a club, executive lounge, so people can gather. Also, my client understands that the Academica had, when they had the great feast in the park, which is several hundred feet up the road, they had used the kitchen in the past to assist the feast. My client, if he is allowed to construct the basement as he would like, he said he would continue to allow, I guess, groups to use the kitchen at no cost as a charitable, you know, as charity to the organization. Also, the, the area is comprised of multifamily residents. There's Cavello Restaurant on the side. There's also St. Stewart Hospital, the funeral parlor across the street, so there is different buildings in the area, so it doesn't really segregate from the zoning or the surrounding buildings. As to the type of hardship, if you can look at the plan, you can see that it is an odd-shaped lot with regard to the way it is, how it runs up South Main Street. The building is quite large, so when we say obsolete with regard to putting a three-family house in that building, it's not, it's cost prohibitive, as well as if you knocked it down to construct a multifamily building, that is also cost prohibitive. So we feel that the best use of the building and to keep, you know, to reuse a building would be to allow this petition. My client has done some quick estimating, feels that it's going to be a cost of, in excess of $4 million to do the project. So with that being said, we would ask that the board accept the petition as it stands.
I'm having difficulty with the math. On the mezzanine, two one-bedrooms, two two-bedrooms?
Uh, well, there's...
On the third floor, two, I get two, four, six, eight.
It's a total of 11 units, so...
A total of 11?
Total of 11.
That, that's including the two, the two offices, the two office units and the exec... Just get me to the 11, because two, 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 and two, I'm up to eight. If I add the other two offices...
No, it's four, four, on the mezzanine, four units, four units, and then three on the first floor. So four and four is eight plus three is 11. 11 residential units.
Three on the first, I must have missed the three on the first floor. What's on the first floor?
The three units plus the two small office spaces in the front.
No, what are they, two-bedroom or one units?
One one-bedroom unit, two two-bedroom units, for a total of three.
All right, so that, I missed, I missed the first floor. So that's the 11, two office spaces and, no, two office spaces, yes?
Yeah, side by side.
Side by side.
Okay.
And then the executive lounge downstairs.
Correct.
Okay.
Total parking spaces.
On the plan, it's total 19, right, Mr. Agia?
Yes, if I can, again, Dan Agia from Sitech CEC. On the site plan you see before you, prior to putting together this proposal, the Academica Club actually stepped forward and purchased a property next door in an attempt to create some additional parking for their facility. So we were lucky to have that additional land area to be added on to, to their. So what we have been able to do when we take those two properties is to create 19 off-street parking spaces, but also increase on-street parking by three more, with the removal of an existing driveway that we would no longer need because we now use a singular driveway to access the two properties. So a total of 19 plus three, 22 new parking spaces, which in our minds met the requirements of 11 units at two spaces per unit.
And the nature of the club that, that you're putting in, is this for residents? Is this a membership club? Is this, I'm just thinking of the traffic that it would generate.
It's going to be a membership club to keep the traffic down. So there would be a fee, it's just so we can utilize the space and the size of the space, especially with regard to the cost of the rehab of the building.
And it's very important to understand that the three uses proposed in this building are all allowed uses in the district, except with the number of residential units. So that's where the real relief comes in with, within the density of proposed apartment dwelling units, which with providing two spaces per unit technically, and the hardship of this very large structure, what else do you feel it with, fill it with? We feel that it's a petition that can easily move forward.
The structure itself isn't being changed, the structure is...
The outside...
Outside, everything is happening interior.
Interior.
Okay.
That's correct. There might be some aesthetic things happening on the outside, but other than that...
But you're not, but you're not expanding.
No.
Okay.
Dan, you mentioned that by eliminating a driveway, we're picking up three parking spaces on-street. How wide was that driveway?
What happened was, we had two separate properties, like I had stated, so we had a driveway that currently services the Academica Club, which is very wide, so we've been able to reduce that down to the required 22 feet. So the reduction in width of the Academica parking lot and the removal of the adjacent driveway allows us to create three spaces times nine, 27 feet.
Because I couldn't remember a 60-foot wide driveway.
It's wide, I mean, it's, it's like, it's like no man's land out there.
One more question, if I may, and it comes down to, it comes down again to parking. If you've got a private club downstairs, that's going to be used, I would assume, mostly during evening hours, which is when the residents are home.
That's correct.
So you're going to run out of parking somehow.
What we would offer is that with regards to the club, the parking demand that has taken place for many years with the restaurant, relying on on-street parking in this generally commercial area, will easily be able to accommodate the number of guests coming to this executive club. So the way we look at it is, it's almost a wash for the club to the restaurant, and then we're, we're providing these 22 spaces, where now there's probably about eight on that property.
Right.
And that includes handicap spaces as well.
Okay, thank you.
Members of the board, any other questions? All right. Is there any, well, Mr. Kenny, do you have, do you have any input on this particular project that we should hear or the audience should hear before we start?
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. I think they made a really good case for hardship on this, and I was interested to hear the fame of this building for steak sandwiches, but I'm glad you've also mentioned the Moose Lodge. And the other thing that it was famous for was in that upper level, live entertainment, dances, performances and so forth, and that's part of what has, has created today, the hardship. You've got a theater inside upstairs. There's no market for that. You're not going to convert this building into a theater. The building's functionally obsolete, and that's clearly one of the things that could be taken into account in finding a hardship determination. I think you made a good case on that. I think you've got the parking covered, and as Dan said, all the uses are allowed, except for the three, you know, you can't have more than three family dwelling, and you're not going to put a three-family dwelling in this huge building. From a planning point of view, this is a really good project, and I'll tell you why. It's going to serve the revitalization of this building, the people living there is going to be an anchor for this neighborhood. We're always talking about creating walkable neighborhoods. There are small retail operations very close to the spot that are going to see a pickup in business because now there are people living there within walking distance, and they can patronize these spots, and that's the kind of mix that we really want to see in our neighborhoods. Next, this, this building is right, it's a block from Kennedy Park, and it's on the edge of the Columbia Street Cultural District. These are amenities that, that serve a residential complex like this, and that's another thing that we like to see as a planning goal, have amenities like that with retail nearby. You're going to infuse the, what, millions of dollars into this project, and, you know, hats off to the developer that wants to take that on. It's a great thing for the community, I think, wishing a lot of luck. And again, as I said, I think the parking is covered, so an obsolete building, a great solution to, to a problem in this neighborhood that can create a real core focus for, for the neighborhood, so I recommend that this be approved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director Kenny. Assistant Director, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I have nothing else.
To the board's comments, huh?
I have nothing else to add, thank you.
All right, is there anyone here in favor of this petition?
There is, the Academica Club, Attorney John Mitchell, 105 Bang Street, Fall River, and with me is Delma Cadino, the treasurer of the Academica, so we strongly support it. The building was listed, there's no interest other than the apartments. I think we had one person look at it as a restaurant, it just doesn't go. Another backed off, they didn't even come to look at it, and everything else was apartments, and the best word came from KAT Management, and I think it's a good use for a building everyone loves, but they have a lot of these social clubs, it's passed, especially a building like that, it's just outdated, so appreciate the board supporting it if it would. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in favor of this petition? Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Okay. Members of the board, you've heard the arguments for and against, mostly for. Do I get a motion to grant? Do I get a motion to deny? Before we go, Jeff, your petition has both variance and special permit.
That's only...
I don't think you need the special permit.
Technically, the parking.
That's why we did it.
Yeah, technically, parking is handled by a special permit.
No, no, I got that. You said, I think you met the requirement.
Well, we meet the requirement for two to one if we're just looking at the residential component, which is the increase to the, to the building. Through a special permit, the board is...
So what I'm asking is, will the board, will the board grant a variance and then we'll deal with the special permit for the parking?
Special permit, that's correct.
You need the relief, I'm looking at you and asking...
That is correct.
I think you need the relief for the special permit, despite the 22 spaces that you've created.
That's correct.
So, board members, we have like two pieces of this puzzle. First, we want to go forward with the variance, have they provided sufficient evidence that the board can exercise its right to grant a variance so they can do what they're proposing, the 11 units, the two office units, and a private executive club in the lounge basement? So if we deal with that one first...
Is that a bifurcated vote on the special?
The bifurcated vote under 86445 says any, wait, yeah, we have to do it separate. Any parking or loading requirement set forth herein, which is the whole parking, may be reduced or modified upon the issuance of a special permit by the Zoning Board of Appeals if the board finds that the reduction or modification is not inconsistent with public health and safety, or that the reduction or modification promotes a public benefit. Such cases might include use of common parking for the separate uses, age or other characteristics of occupants, peculiarities of the use which makes unusual measures and demand invalid, availability of on-street parking or parking at nearby municipal facilities, use of off-street parking.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the proposal meets the requirements of a special permit and... and, uh, vote, or move to grant it.
All right, so we'll do the special permit first. Jim Clarkins makes the motion to grant special permit and makes the finding that the reduction or modification is not inconsistent with public health or safety under eighty-six, four, forty-five. Do I have a second on Jim Clarkins' motion?
Second.
Second, Joe Pereira. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Aye.
Jim Clarkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes, okay. Spec, and the special permit will be for a grant for two years?
Yes.
Okay. Two-year grant. Okay, now let's move to the variance part. Have they met, have they provided us with sufficient evidence under forty-eight, section ten, more particularly the, the shape of the topography or soil condition, but in this particular instance, it is the existing building itself? If they've met that, then do we grant the variance for the eleven, uh, one and two-bedroom units, the two office units, and a private executive club lounge in the basement?
So move that we grant the petition as submitted for the eleven units, two offices, and a private lounge.
Okay. Do you, do you wanna specify, what is it, two, four, uh, six? Is it six? Six one-bedrooms and five two-bedrooms? No, just as, okay. So Jim Clarkins', Jim Clarkins' motion is that we grant the eleven one and two-bedroom units, two off-street, uh, strike that, two office units and a private executive club lounge in the basement. That's Jim Clarkins' motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Who's that? Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Dan Dupere, second. Any discussion on that motion?
No.
Hearing none. John Frank?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Jim Clarkins?
Yes.
Yes. Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. That petition is granted. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, your time.
Thank you. Agenda item number?
One.
No, three. Boyant sign, eleven sixty-eight Highland Avenue, lot S three-two. This was tabled from the September sixteen, twenty-twenty-one meeting. This is a special permit request to install one single-sided, non-ulminated ground sign on the front lawn to identify the residences at Adams House. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Rich Rion, prime engineering at Fair Twins. To my right is Paul Cowan, um, who with, um, Bay Coast Bank has, uh, constructed apartments in the historic Adams House. Um, and as you read in the petition, there is just to put a, a, a sign in the front identifying it as Adams House. Um, on the plans that we prepared, the first one was just an aerial photo showing the locus in relationship to the neighborhood, and the, the second sheet was merely a topographic plan showing the, the topography, the parking hall in the background, uh, and the main building. And the third sheet was just showing the sign being set back twenty-five feet from the layout of Highland Avenue. And finally, the fourth sheet was the actual sign, uh, which merely says the residences at Adams House. And, um, basically, the size of the sign is thirty inches by ninety inches, and it sits on posts that hold it up thirty-six inches off the ground. Very straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
This is brain surgery.
Hold on, yeah, it is. Uh, so under eighty-six, four, forty-five, special permits, uh, for sign, or strike that, eighty-six, eighty-six, four, fifty-four, special permits, the zoning board of appeals may grant a special permit to construct a sign other than those permitted, provided the board finds that the sign would not be detrimental to abutting properties and is needed to adequately identify the business. So I'm assuming that's the basis we respect.
Yes, it is.
So let's see, is anybody here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Here, Director, do you have any comments about this petition?
Uh, I, I think the sign is worthy of, uh, the special permit. It's not intrusive, it's not something that's light led up and flashes, and, uh, it's discreet, nicely designed, it serves the building well, and I can't imagine that it would be a detriment to the neighborhood anyway.
Okay. Members of the board, any questions on this particular project?
No.
No? Anybody here? I asked, anyone in favor, anyone opposed? Okay, can I get a motion to grant, motion to deny, special-
I'll make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant.
And a second.
Second, Joe Pereira, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none.
Yes.
John Frank, yes.
Yes.
Jim Clarkins?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item zero-four, two-seventy Seaberry Street Realty Trust, two-seventy of Seaberry Street, lot M twenty-seven, fifty-nine. This was tabled from September sixteen, twenty-twenty-one meeting. Special permit request pursuant to section eighty-six, four, twenty-four, four, twenty-five, to convert the existing commercial-use building into an ice cream novelty shop.
For the record, Attorney Gregory Brilliant, on behalf of two-seventy Seaberry Realty Trust, I'm here tonight with, uh, Dan Agia of SciTech. Um, he's gonna do most of the talking. I know that the prior meeting, which, uh, I left when it was gonna be tabled, um, there was discussion of whether or not this was an allowable use in and of itself based on a pre-existing non-conforming use from a prior, um, variety store that sold ice cream. Um, Mr. Serio, who's here, Steve Serio, who's gonna be the principal in this particular endeavor, um, we just wanted to make sure it was crystal clear and, uh, clean and neat. So therefore, uh, in speaking to Mr. Agia, we decided to move forward with the, uh, special permit, uh, so there would no, be no, um, nuisance relative to the use of the building. And, uh, at this time, I'll let, uh, Mr. Agia take over. Uh, he's done a lot of the research relative to this particular building.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Dan Agia from SciTech CEC, with regards to this application for two-seventy Seaberry Street Realty Trust. This is a property that sits directly west of Ruggles Park, right at the corner of Cherry Street and Seaberry Street. That, as Attorney Brilliant had stated, this had historically been a convenience store for many, many years. However, over the last year or two, it's been utilized more as a storage facility, and we couldn't actually track down a convenience store license, invoice, or bill within the last two years. If we could, then we would agree we didn't necessarily have to be here. Um, however, uh, for the sake of real estate transfer and, and purchase of the building, as Attorney, uh, Brilliant stated, we wanted to make sure that all the i's were dotted and t's were crossed. So the gentleman who's looking to purchase this property is going to open up an ice cream shop within the existing structure, and that's what's before you today. So through eighty-six, four, twenty-four, and eighty-six, four, twenty-five, through the granting of a special permit, um, the board can allow the conversion of this non-conforming use and this non-conforming structure into the provo, into the proposed, uh, ice cream shop. So it's a pretty straightforward application. There is no exterior construction to take place, other than potentially some siding and some windows and maybe some new roofing, but no expansion of the structure itself, and it would provide a great service to the families and children that spend time in the park or that neighborhood in general. I think this would be an uplift for the area, and I think people actually do miss the convenience shop, uh, that, that used to be there. That's all. So if you have any specific questions, I'd be more than glad to answer any.
And Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the, relative to the actual, uh, um, operation, it's gonna be an all-year service right now. The hours of operation are gonna be, um, Sunday through Thursday from eleven AM to nine PM, and Friday and Saturday from eleven AM to ten PM. He, uh, envisions hiring eight new employees, and as Dan said, exteriorly, there's, there's not gonna be any, any change to the use, other than, as he said, it may do some cosmetics on the ex, exterior, but it'll be full renovation within the interior of the building, uh, in order to have the ice cream shop and novelties associated with that.
Okay. Thank you. The sun, what was it? Sat, it was Sunday through Thursdays?
Sunday. Uh, through Thursday, eleven AM to nine PM, and Friday-
Oh, so Friday till?
And Friday and Saturday.
Eleven to ten.
Eleven to ten.
Okay. All right. Members of the board, any questions? Yeah?
I, I had, uh, just a question about the novelties. Is that ice cream-related novelties?
Yeah, uh, you know, Mr. Kenny, ice cream-related novelties, is he gonna have, uh, maybe sell cones or pints and things of that nature, but mostly along those lines, not a full-blown variety store. Um, some of these things sell other things-
Be able to buy beverages, maybe a slush machine, you know, things like that. He won't be selling bread and cereal.
Yeah, exactly.
No, no, he's asking the question, and it's kinda where I was gonna go with it. Cause I, I really don't want you coming back if you say, I think I wanna expand and I wanna sell beverages, or I wanna bring it into a convenience. So, so you-
Steve?
Ask, ask the permission that you want while you're here before the board.
Thank you.
You're looking for, it says ice cream slash novelty, so let's nail it down, what you wanna do.
Uh, novelties is more of a subcategory to the ice cream business, such as milkshakes and ice cream sandwiches. It'll all be ice cream.
Good.
Regardless of their shapes and size.
I just wanted to make sure you can live with it. I, I don't mind you coming back, we need the work every now and then, but-
I just have one other comment. One of the, one of the really sad things that's happened to this city and cities throughout the country over the years has been the disappearance of these corn stores. You know, just taking a convenience and an amenity away from neighborhoods is the, the larger chains and so forth that have killed off these little mom-and-pop neighborhood locations.
Where did I just hear? This lecture, go ahead.
And, and I just wanna say that, uh, I don't think you need the variance of the special permit on this, I think you can do it, but, uh, I hope you're successful with it, and, uh, it's, it's a good thing for the neighborhood. I think every Olmsted Park should have an ice cream joint across this street.
I'm, I'm not a social media person, but, um, Steve has been sending me social media postings, and at least from the social media postings, the neighborhood would be very much, uh, in favor and utilize this particular suit. Yeah, they are.
Okay. Well, let's see, is anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay? Members of the board, what do you want to, special permit is being asked of us under eighty-six, four, twenty-four, and eighty-six, four, twenty-five. We have to determine that, well, let's start with the eighty-six, four, twenty-four. Uh, the Board of Appeals may grant a special permit to change or extend a non-conforming use in accordance with section, only if it determines that such change or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. We hear testimony that the current use is maybe warehouse or storage, so we're getting rid of that, and we're turning it into an ice cream shop. Does it meet that standard? Under eighty-six, four, twenty-five, non-conforming structure other than single and two-family, the Zoning Board of Appeals may grant a special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter, or change a non-conforming structure in accordance with the section, only if it determines that such reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. So, the similar in nature, do we have that finding that this particular change of use, um, uh, or extension is not substantially more detrimental to the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood?
I'll make that motion.
John Frank makes that motion. Jim Clarkins seconds. Any discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Clarkins?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Uh, Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes, the, this is a two-year grant.
Right.
Two-year grant. Um, the, it's a special permit, uh, for the conversion of the existing use building into an ice cream novelty shop. Okay?
Thank you.
Uh, we can put the conditions of the hours. Do you want to amend hours, Saturday, Sunday and Thursday, eleven AM to nine PM, Friday and Saturday, eleven AM to ten PM?
Yes. Sinage? No, nothing out of the-
Now, there's a, it's a, an area there, I could just put a bear-
Wall-mounted sign.
Yeah, wall-mounted.
Wall-mounted sign, which, I think, I think there's something-
Whatever falls in the guideline.
There is something there now. So if there's anything beyond what's there now, then we'll come back and ask for a special permit for additional signs.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, members of the board.
Ricky, one more before we take a break? Yeah, you can do it, okay? All right, so now we're back to agenda item one. Are we ready? Agenda item one. MTM Realty Trust, forty-four Downing Street, lot L four forty. Good night here, Director. Variance request to build a new house-
A new house.
-in G District, waiving loss coverage, frontage, and setback requirements. Good evening, Mr. Gornadetsky. Do you need any help? Uh, Director left, cause this is, anyway. All yours.
Yeah.
Will you identify yourself for the record, please?
For the record, my name's Alex Gornadetsky, I'm a professional engineer. My office is four-two-two North Main Street in Fall River. I am representing Mrs., Miss Marie Mederos, uh, who is at Westfield MTM Trust, who owns this property. Your consideration is, uh, forty-four Downing Street property.
Alex, can you see if your microphone, mic, is, is the microphone working?
Hello?
No.
Hello?
Good. I can get you, so we're good.
So, for your consideration, this forty-four Downing Street property, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot of record, uh, uh, lot area is approximately forty-seven, forty-eight-hundred square feet, and frontage is forty, let's say forty-five feet of frontage. The lot at some point had a house. House was located very close to the property lines, probably within a foot of each property line, which is consistent with the neighborhood. However, house was in dilapidated condition, so the owner of the property received a citation, I believe, from the building inspector, and she informed you more in, in more, in more detail about it. So, uh, she chose to demolish the house, and what happened, now she needs a variance to build a house on this lot. That's, that's, the proposed, proposed house will be set further away from the street and would have better setbacks.
The lot, as I understand this particular project through my research, this lot existed. There was a single-family house on it.
Correct.
The house was falling into disrepair.
Correct.
The owners were receiving notices, and I, whether it was from the building department or from code enforcement, I'm not sure which, about, it's not, it's not habitable, you need to do something. There was no consultation, as I understand it. And rather than, uh, ask for a stay or sell the property or rehab it, rather than get any more notices from the building department, uh, they leveled it without asking the question, what happens if I level the building?
Correct.
And the, where it would have been pre-existing non-conforming structure disappeared, and And the, where it would have been pre-existing, nonconforming structure disappeared and now I have a vacant lot that merged in your before the board for that reason.
Correct.
And that's all in preparation of tonight's meeting. That's what I found out. Okay. Is that, am I, did I say something wrong? Is that what happened? And nobody, no one told you, lady, if you knock it down?
I, I was in charge. My father is in the nineties, last stages of Alzheimer's, is our attorney. I acted as AP. We only got that first notice with fines, two notices with fines. Never no notice. We always paid our taxes, paid the water fee.
Okay.
Tried to maintain at least a section of the backyard that my sister and I could maintain. And when they sent that notice, we had top and right away, we had thirty days. What could I do in thirty days? Couldn't really get a bid for the market or rehab. Again, there's no finance, there was no resources and finances to be able to rehab. The only option, the most economic way, was to actually demolish it, not being aware of your dance.
Thank you. Okay, so that, that's this, that's forty-four Downing Street. I don't, the building got raised, it merged with the other lot. The lot lines are not changed. What you're proposing to do is build a single-family house with meeting more of the setbacks of this G District than existed prior.
Correct.
Okay, I don't think, I did not find anything that they were combined, water and sewer, but the lot is now vacant and there's no water and sewer. It's been terminated, as I talked with the sewer and water department. Okay, so, members of the board, any questions? I mean, that's what, forty-four? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay? Well, do you think that there's been sufficient presentation on a hardship to grant a variance to build a single-family dwelling on this pre-existing lot based on how it came to be a vacant lot? Motion to grant, motion to deny?
I'll make a motion to grant.
Is it Dan Dupere, motion to grant? Okay, second on Dan's motion?
I'll second.
Second, Joe Pereira. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Clark?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. So that petition is granted. You should be able to put the house up. And we'll try to have, I'll try to have a conversation with maybe the code enforcement people, so this doesn't happen again. Why don't we take a five-minute break at this point in time and then we'll start on the other items on the agenda. This board will stand and recess for five minutes. Thank you. Bravo Development LLC, care of Thomas P. Kalaran Esquire, two-eighty-eight Plymouth Avenue, lot one, or I, nineteen-nine. This is a variance request to allow indoor storage facility in existing building, waiving zoning requirements in the M.D. Medical District.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Thomas Kalaran Law, says at three-fifty North Main Street, Dover, Massachusetts. I represent the petitioner, Bravo Development. With me tonight is Laura Katz, who's one of the principals of Bravo Development. The property at issue is two-eighty-eight Plymouth Avenue. I think you're all likely familiar with this property. It's along Plymouth Ave, near Rodman Street and also along the one-ninety-five on-ramp, also above the property. And right next door is the McDonald's Sullivan's Tire and ABC Building Supply. We're before the board tonight because this property is located in a medical district. We need a use variance from the board for the proposed use at issue, which is a indoor storage facility. What is intended is there'll be a complete rehab of the building on the interior. It'll be a self-contained storage facility. There'll be no changes to the external of the building with the exception of the two loading ramps, which I'll, I'll mention and point out on the plan. Other than that, the building itself will stay as is, as it appears today, with the exception of there will be obviously aesthetic repairs to the building. There will certainly be a beautification, not only of the building, but of the lot in question. Right now, it's in, to call it tired, I think is an understatement and is putting it mildly. So, as I said, there'll be a one-hundred percent rehab of the facility. This will be a self-contained, self-storage unit. All people that will be accessing will have their own access code. There'll be security cameras on the outside. There'll be security cameras on the inside. There'll be twenty-four-hour surveillance of the property. So they'll be able to tell every person that's coming and going, one through their access code and also through the surveillance system. It's proposed that this business would be operating twenty-four hours, seven days per week. It'll be manned, be manned by staff from approximately nine AM to about six PM each day. But again, people that do have storage units there would be able to access it beyond what I would call traditional working hours. The, again, the two changes, and I'll get back to the microphone, but it's the loading ramp right here and a loading ramp on the rear of the building. Those will be the only two exterior changes where there'll be any type of construction. And everything else will be done on the interior.
Attorney Kalaran, you're adding those or you're expanding what he currently exists there?
Those would be new loading ramps.
New loading ramps.
There's an existing loading ramp on the rear of the building that'll stay as is, but those two kind of grayish-brown areas that you see shaded, those are new loading ramps that'll be constructed.
Actually, yeah, we're actually adjusting the one ramp that's currently there.
No, I just wanted, because I'm saying, I think my recollection, there was a loading ramp.
There is a loading ramp, so that'll be, I think, that'll be upgraded, but those two ramps will be added. If you take a look at the plan, the area that's in black, that's the, that's the property itself. Yeah, it's about four-point-four-three acres or four-point-three-four acres, sorry. The existing building is four stories in height, is one-hundred-eighty-nine thousand square feet. Again, it's the intention to utilize the entire structure for this self-storage space. In terms of the surrounding area, again, as identified, it's all commercial in nature that surrounds the property, except for the northerly side, which is bounded by the interstate ramp. There'll be no changes to the existing ingress and egress areas. They'll remain as is. In terms of the intensity of the use, I would suggest to the board that this is a very light use. It's not something that's going to generate traffic. I know anybody that's been down in this area of town around rush hour probably has experienced some backups in and around there. I would strongly suggest to this board that this is not the type of business that will add to any kind of traffic congestion. Most people that have units there, I'm sure, are going to try to access their units on what I'll call off-hours and non-peak hours when the traffic is flowing at its highest rate. So again, I think the proposed use is very mild. The building itself is about sixty-six percent occupied as it currently stands, but again, if you've been inside there in a while, to call it tired, again, I think is an understatement. It certainly could use more than a facelift and these gentlemen are prepared to do that. Ultimately, if the use variance is granted, the business will be operated by storage space. They're a national company. Most of the storage space units that they have, I think, are east of the Mississippi. They have about fifty facilities, so this is something that they're very familiar with and there certainly will be an experienced company that's running this business.
How big are the storage units?
Well, there's multiple sizes. They go from five-by-ten up to twenty-by-ten. There might be some thirty-by-tens depending on the interior design. And we're also going to have one in New Bedford as well.
All storage inside?
Yes. All inside, correct.
So no boats and campers and trailers and stuff parked in the back?
No.
Yeah, no, it's a good question, man.
Very, very fair question. There's a, a storage place in Somerset, not far from where I live. And for a very long time, that's exactly what the parking lot was until they put the outside units there. But no, there's, there's no intention to do that.
So the building stays the same internally? You'll do some renovations and upgrading?
Absolutely.
Twenty-four-seven access? Parking is what it is? It's no outdoor storage?
Correct, no outdoor storage.
Good, Joe.
Yeah, will the, will the property be fenced and gated? Will they have access through a gate? Or will anybody be able to drive into the property?
Anybody will be able to drive into the property because they don't have any exterior storage, so there's really no need for a gate. The building will be completely secured.
And lighting around the building, et cetera, for security, somebody goes in there at three o'clock in the morning because they really need to get grandma's wall clock out of the, out of the storage area, they'll feel safe?
Correct, so, correct, so there'll be, it'll be amply lit, but it won't be lit up, you know, like it's, you know, Fenway Park.
If you're thinking, if you're thinking along those lines, then have a go-to-site plan review for dealing with that, with lighting issues.
But I'm sure there'll be lighting, it'll be time-sensitive, emotion-sensitive as well, so that somebody's accessing, lights will go on. But again, they want to make sure that people feel comfortable and safe going in there after hours.
As you said, the concern, it's a dual concern. It's going to hurt like Fenway Park in order to keep it safe or, you know, is it...
But you want to have adequate lighting to make sure people are safe there.
Okay. Any other questions, members of the board? No? Assistant Director of Planning, do you have any comments that we should hear about?
I just have a question, actually.
Yes, please.
Regarding the aesthetic improvements, I know there's a lot of signage on that building right now. Is the intent for all of that to be removed and just for there to be signage regarding, or for just the intended use of storage?
Yes, so I do have some, some elevations, which may answer that question. So, this is the proposal for what the exterior will look like. It may be slightly different than what you see on that, but there will be some signage on the exterior of the building identifying it as a self-storage space. But in terms of the signage of these other businesses that are there, those will be coming down.
Okay.
So if we want to make that a condition, that if the sale goes through, then all the signage, all the current signage needs to come off and the, whatever, one, whatever signage, just identifying this particular building will be there. We're not going to have the inflatable chain with a lock on it as it drives.
We can make that a condition, Mr. Chairman.
Let me write that idea down.
Ninety-three in Boston.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, it's the fortress. This is a pretty classy operation.
No, no, I got it, but it's just...
Yeah.
All right, so is there anybody here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, it seems kind of straightforward, but members of the board, motion to grant the variance for the change of use? Because that's the only variance that you need, I believe, according to the law.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance for a change of use.
Good. Variance change of use.
Subject to, uh...
Removal of signage.
Well...
And site plan review?
Right.
Removal of existing signage and site plan review. Okay?
And with that condition, I will second.
Second, Joe, Joe Pereira. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Clark?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. That petition is granted for those conditions.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to being in Fall River. It's a great town.
Good. We'd like to hear that public service announcement, man. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number three, David and Antonio Pavo, six-ninety-seven, seven-eleven, Pleasant Street, lot K four, fourteen and fifteen. This is a variance request to modify the interior lot line between two parcels to eliminate an existing building approachment, waiving requirements in the commercial mill district.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dan Aguirre. I'm a senior project manager at SciTech Civil Environmental Consultants with addresses here in the city at Ten Purchase Street. As the chairman stated, this is a petition, which is a variance, which will modify the existing interior lot line between two existing properties along Pleasant Street, known as six-ninety-seven, and seven-eleven Pleasant Street, map K four, lots fourteen and fifteen. This is a commercial mill district. And the plan that you see before you, you see two existing structures and in your packet, you'll see the two assessors' cards. Although these aren't residential buildings, otherwise this would be a special permit, however...
They're two separate lots owned by the same...
Two separate lots, same people. One building built in eighteen-seventy and the other around nineteen-hundred. So, when the gentleman had us survey the property, it was determined that the building that sits on the southerly portion extends over the existing lot line a little bit. So what we'd like to do is modify that, push it off of the lot line so that if he wants to sell the southern property, somebody will have vehicular access to get around the back of the building.
That's the dotted line, which is the...
The dotted line is the existing lot line, so we'll be moving it off.
So now are we giving eight feet access to drive around and get there?
Let me make sure.
Well, here, let me get...
Yes, it is eight, yes.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm there. Let me see.
So right now, where they, where they were both operated by the same gentlemen's, wasn't an issue. But now when he would like to convey one of the parcels, he wanted to ensure that, rather than have easements or things of that nature, that would just shift over the lot line.
It's cleaner to do it that way, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and that's it?
Couple of months extra for permitting, but it's the right way to do it.
But it's the right way to do it, that's correct. Okay. Is there, members of the board, any questions about this?
My, my only concern, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, ask.
Would be the eight feet, would that be sufficient? If, if suddenly there was a fence down this property line, is that going to be sufficient for the fire department, emergency vehicles, et cetera?
Yes, well, technically, I mean, it, it could be, it could be worse. There could be no one to get around it. So luckily, the police station is right behind it and that provides open access to all of the buildings at, at every point in time. But no, if a fence were to be there, I'm, I'm sure that the fire would be able to be, to be fought. Again, you look at the proximity of the police station building to the rear and how close that is to the property line as well. So this is all open parking area behind, between the two buildings and to the left side of that building as well.
I love our police department. They're terrible firefighters.
But they're first on the scene.
Always.
All right, anything else, Joe?
No, sir.
Dan? No? No? Okay, no, I'm getting a head shakes. No, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, it seems kind of straightforward. Can I get a motion to grant?
Make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant. John Frank, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, John Frank?
Yes.
Uh, Jim Clark?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Agenda item number four. South Coast Hospitals Group Inc., three-oh-five, three-oh-nine, three-seventeen, Annover Street, lot N seventeen, thirty-two, thirty-three, sixty-third. Variance request to allow the demolition of three nonconforming multi-family dwellings and the construction of a parking facility. Special permit request to allow the expansion, extension of the existing nonconforming lot coverage, waiving requirements in the G District.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Matthew Burke. I represent South Coast Hospitals. With me is Mr. Dan Aguirre from SciTech, as you know, the engineer from SciTech, and also Phil Oliver, representing South Coast Hospitals. I'd just like to give you a little background before I let Mr. Aguirre speak in regards to the plan, but we are before the board requesting a variance to demo three dwellings that are on the lot. By way of background, we did notify the Historical Commission back in July, July thirty-first of, I'm sorry, July twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-one. They provided us with a letter basically holding this up for six months per the ordinance. We did go before the Historical Commission, the last meeting last month. We explained our situation. We provided the plans that we plan on using before this board. They were kind enough to give us a letter in favor and they were kind enough to lift the moratorium. So we are, we are now before the board with the blessings of the Historical Commission.
Did you provide that to the board?
That should have been provided. If not, I have one more.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking, I don't remember seeing it, that's... Please continue.
Okay, in essence, in essence, there's three buildings on this property. It's three-oh-nine, three-eleven and three-seventeen. Three-seventeen
Three-seventeen is the one that...
Falls under the historical guidelines. So we do have a letter from the Historical Commission after our presentation. Basically, removing the six-month moratorium and they also were kind enough to give us that letter in favor.
Anybody want to see the letter?
No, Mr. Aguirre is going to speak in greater detail on the request for this variance in regards to the plans, but I, I'd just like to make a few points that in regards to our request for this demolition permit. If this is allowed to go forward, there will be some curb cuts. I suggest to you, based on those plans, it'll give us seventy-five feet more of street parking and Mr. Aguirre will speak more about that. I suggest it'll be safer. It'll be, there'll be only one entrance. There's an adjacent parking lot on the side. So I suggest there'd be more parking for the neighbors and more parking for, off-street parking for the employees. With that, I'm going to let Mr. Aguirre, I have, if you have any questions, please ask, but I'll let Mr. Aguirre discuss the plans in a little more, greater detail than I can.
The only, my, my only question, and I didn't see it on the plan, it's just a parking lot. We're not going up with a...
No, just a, at grade parking facility.
That's it?
That's it.
So I'm not dealing with any structure, two, three, no, okay. I just wanted to make, because that was my understanding.
No, it, it's pretty simple and almost foolish why we need to be here, however...
It's never foolish to be before the board.
We feel that, we feel that we do. So, as Attorney Burke had stated, this is, this parcels or parcels is comprised of three separate parcels, all nonconforming due to density of residential units, the size of the lots and lot coverage as well. So we've got an entirety of a nonconforming condition to the G District. The proposal moving forward is, again, to combine those and to utilize this parcel in conjunction with the parcel to the south, which is an existing parking facility that South Coast currently uses now. So what, in the process of doing so, what we looked at was, we wanted to make sure, and when we were dealing with the Historic Commission, we wanted to make sure that we were able to provide some screening to the residential property that would have been left to our east. And you see what we've done is we've pulled the parking facility ten feet off of that property line and will install a row of vegetative screening that we'll deal with during site plan review. But the hospital is totally committed to providing whatever screening is required by the planning department along that residential boundary line. In addition to that as well, we have provided an additional buffer strip along Summerfield Street, which could be some introduced green space to the area and landscaping as well. You'll also see at the corner of Annover and Summerfield, it was asked by the Historic Commission that we create some type of a park-ish bench or signage in recognition of the owner of the historic structure that built it.
Ruben Small?
So there'll be something built in that little landscape corner with a tree and a bench and some type of signage indicating the historic significance of the property. So the relief that we're here seeking is that a parking facility is not allowed in a G District unless it is accessory to a primary use. So we had a discussion regarding, okay, maybe we leave the historic building as the primary use and then build a parking lot and not have to come before the zoning board of appeals. Well, that kind of defeats the purpose of trying to create parking in this area that drastically needs increased parking. So we said, you know what, let's go and ask for the, for the requested relief. In this proposal, we'll be utilizing the existing driveway for the parking facility to the south because they will, they will now become adjacent. And we'll eliminate the three existing driveways that access three separate properties, increasing some on-street parking as well. So, as you see, this will give us, I forgot what the exact total number is, if my math deceives me.
Forty-three.
Forty-three new spaces. it difficult. So with regards to zoning relief, that's the relief we're asking for, is just allowing a parking facility...
The demolition of the parking facility to be existing in the G District that doesn't allow...
So technically, the parking facility is the primary use, not accessory use. So that's the zoning relief. With regards to the special permit, we currently have a parcel that does not meet the lot coverage conditions for the G District. And as you'll see on our plan, we have an existing lot coverage of about 75%. Proposed lot coverage will be around 85%, plus or minus. And what I would offer, and this has been the argument in past petitions through site plan review, they will ensure that stormwater management is handled in a manner here to offset that 10% and then some. They're going to make us take this infiltrator under the parking lot and handle stormwater where right now we've got 75% lot coverage that just runs to downstream of Butters. So overall, to the environment, this would be an increased win with the amount of green space that's being entered around the perimeter and stormwater management creating less of a runoff issue to any downstream of Butters. So it's pretty straightforward.
All access is going to be through the existing...
Existing driveway.
All right. So these concrete barriers in the middle are going to be removed or opened up or whatever?
Those are going to be removed. Yep. So this existing driveway...
So you're losing these driveways?
So what we'll technically do, if you look at this, will actually pick up a couple of spaces in that lot as well by getting rid of those barriers. So yes, I'm sure you've all been in that lot for one reason or another.
Yeah. So you mentioned that this would increase parking for the neighborhood as well. So this is not going to be gated? It's not going to be a power gate on it?
No. It's going to increase parking, on-street parking for the neighborhood. This will be South Coast parking only.
Only, okay.
This property has three driveways right now, so those will be eliminated. That would be the street parking that we're talking about adding to the neighborhood. So we'll easily pick up two spaces on Summerfield and two spaces on Hanover as well, and eliminate the residential parking that eats up some of those spaces now.
Attorney Burke, Dan, what authority does the board have to grant that special permit under what section?
With regards to the...
With the special permit that you're asking for?
With the lot coverage?
To expansion of, yes, extension to the existing non-conforming lot coverage, because I'm thinking that that would have been a variance, but you have said a special permit.
We've always moved it through special permit before, but let me find out where it is. It would be under non-conforming uses of land, 86, 424.
Under 86, 424, that's where you...
That's correct.
Okay.
Because it's not a structure.
Okay. No, I just want to make sure that if we grant it, I don't want. Let's make sure it works. Okay?
Yeah, we don't want Dan raising questions.
Yeah.
I know that's why he's asking, because he wouldn't have asked otherwise. But that's it. It's a little game, cat and mouse.
So is there anybody here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Yes, ma'am. You identify yourself.
My name is Veronica. I'm done, and I live at...
You're right, you're right next door. You're the one who's going to have the buffer of all the trees.
Yes.
So you're the one I have specifically written down that said, I want to find out what the woman next door has to say.
Well, I actually drafted a statement.
What would I take?
Well, I don't know now if it's applicable because when the zoning board letter arrived at my home and I read it, the use of the word parking facility made me, my thought was that it would be a structure, a multi-level structure similar to the lot.
I'm glad I'm not alone. Yes, go ahead.
So if, and I even wrote in my statement that if the buildings were to be demolished and that area was just going to be paved or blacktopped to expand the existing lot, to me, that's a reasonable scenario. What I was opposed to would be a multi-level structure next to my home, and I didn't have information. And I actually contacted the planning board yesterday. I spoke with Christine, and she offered to send me the plans, but I left work at 4:30. She sent the email. You got my out of office reply. I was not at work today. So it's possible. May I see them?
Of course.
So...
Show the colored one.
Right next door.
Give her the colorized one.
The hospital paid 50 cents for a colored one.
This one? Yeah.
South Coast is going to have a color bring up, come on.
No, she was the one that I was concerned about. What I, that's awful. I thought she was a representative of the hospital.
Yeah. No, and the Historic Commission was very concerned about that. And really, we're taking away, that's why I gave you the existing conditions plan a little bit bolder, where you can see how the current structures sit in relation to her property.
Stop telling me the rules of...
So there's an existing driveway, and there's an existing garage that is two feet from the property line, maybe?
You saw, you saw my fingerprints all over these two properties.
So this would be right here, correct?
This is like a commercial for stormwater issues. Yeah, wait a minute.
So my driveway would not be affected. I'm right here. This would be green space next to me.
No, if anything, you've got to pick up two on-street spaces directly adjacent to your driveway for yourself.
Okay, thank you. So in, I don't feel it's necessary for me to be my statement because as I said, it was based on the statement that appeared in the zoning board letter.
Facility, and you're thinking the same as I did, that it was going up?
Facility, just because there's already one erected on the other side of the block on, you know, that would be...
Highland Ave?
Highland Ave. So I was concerned that that would be going up next to my property. So I don't have a concern with a lot, and it looks like there'll be, as you mentioned, vegetation and privacy. I would, and it seemed like you addressed this when you spoke, there'll be, is this a slight, you know, the water runs down, so that will be addressed?
Yeah. So what will happen is because the parking lot can't be constructed as steep as that existing grade is now...
Yes.
That will be flattened out a little bit. There'll be a series of catch basins that will collect water...
Okay.
And infiltrate it under the parking lot into infiltration chambers rather than having it run off onto your property now as it currently does.
Okay.
So you should see a drastic reduction in the amount of water that hits your property.
Great. And then my only other, if I may...
Yes, please. No, no, we're going to give you as much time because you're the director of the board.
Well, I really, as long as it's not a facility, is there a potential for it to be a facility in the future, or is that unknown?
Not petition of this board.
No, well, we would have to come before here. You would be notified again.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that the board may have a different view of it when we came back in with that.
And when the structures, the current structures are demolished, I'm assuming there'll be fencing and protection and spraying to keep everything at a minimum as far as the dust to be...
So the building department, different permitting agency than the Zoning Board of Appeals, will make us go through a demolition process, demolition permit, fencing, dust control, rodent abatement, similar to conversations we had regarding one of the buildings earlier this evening. But yes, that's a whole permitting process itself just for the demolition.
Right. Is there any projected timeframe?
Mr. Olivera might be able to answer that for you, but soon, as soon as we possibly can, right?
Yeah, we'd be looking to probably to complete the project towards the early spring, maybe into the summer of next year.
Okay.
Have we convinced you to vote in favor?
Well, I...
Or not opposition in any way.
We're just going to have time not to ask you any questions.
It's right in my statement that, in fact, I had actually stated that I understand that, because my initial was thought was against an actual, you know, structure, multi-level structure. And I say that I understand that expansion is sometimes necessary, and if the hospital requested to demolish the houses that they purchased and only blacktop that area to expand their existing parking lot, then that is a reasonable scenario. My concern was to a multi-level structure.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. Thank you for participating.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else in favor? Anyone else opposed? Okay. Members of the board, you've heard the presentation by Mr. Aguirre and Attorney Burke. I guess there are two pieces that we need to deal with. One is the variance part, and one is the special permit part. So special permit being the waiver of the, eliminate the...
Expansion of lot coverage.
Yeah, expansion of the lot coverage. So we need to deal with that under 86, 424 if the board finds that it's substantially not more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. So that would be the special permit component, and then the other one would just be the change of use that we can have the parking lot in the area. Madam, I haven't, I didn't ask if you had any input. We should have, I should have looked to you and asked. So tell me what, if you have something you'd like to contribute.
I do not, actually. My questions were going to be about landscaping and stormwater, but that sounds like that's going to be addressed mostly in...
Stormwater is going to be addressed if...
Through site plan and landscaping as well.
Yeah. So I'm okay.
Yes.
So landscaping that's going to be installed along the perimeter, it's going to be installed. Will that be maintained on a regular basis by South Coast?
Absolutely.
And if it's not, we'll give you the direct number to South Coast, and you could call them once a month to cut the grass, pick up the trash. Okay. So, members of the board, what do you want to do? Grant, deny? Should they expand? Should they keep it the way it is?
That's a two-part vote, right?
Yes. Whatever way you want to do it.
So I'll move that we grant the special permit...
Okay.
For the increase of lot coverage.
Substantially, so it's not substantial...
It will not be more substantially detrimental.
Not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood under 86, 424. We're in agreement with that?
We're in agreement with that motion.
Okay. So that's the special permit motion, and that would be, not that it matters, three-year grant. So that's Jim Corkins' motion for the special permit part of the application. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Dan Dupere, Dan Dupere, second. Any discussion on the motion? John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. So the special permit part is granted. Variance part?
Move that we grant the variance to permit the use of...
Demolition.
The demolition of the buildings and the use of the property as a, as a parking lot.
Parking lot, okay.
I'll second.
Subject to site plan review because of the vegetation.
Site plan review, okay. Who says site? Dan? Dan Dupere, second. Any discussion on the motion? John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Dan Dupere, yeah, chairman aside, yes. So that petition's granted with those conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming out. Thank you, Ms. Dunn.
Thank you.
Agenda item number five. Yes? Yeah. Wait, Burke, I'm keeping your letter. Go and make that part of the record.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Agenda item number five. Norbert Soars, West Side Terrace Street, Lot I2317. Special permit and/or variance request to construct a 32 by 30, 950 square foot freestanding garage on a pre-existing non-conforming parcel of land with approximately 59-foot frontage and 3,200 square feet of land, waiving applicable requirements in the A2 district.
Good evening again. For the record, my name is Dan Aguirre from SciTech Civil Environmental Consultants, Inc., representing Mr. Norbert Soars, who is here this evening, who is the property owner of parcel I23-17 located on the west side of Terrace Street. It's a 59 by 55-foot square parcel of land that falls in the A2 district. We are here before you this evening requesting relief in, in the grounds of a special permit or a variance, whatever would be more palatable to the board if they thought it would be at all. We have a situation where Mr. Soars purchases property a year ago?
March 13, March 16, 2021.
2021. At that time, there was a trailer and an existing garage on the property. And Mr. Chairman, you have a colored drawing that you'll see in yellow, the perimeter, and you'll see the garage tucked off into the northwest corner and then an existing trailer on the other portion. So what I would like to do is first give you my argument with regards to special permit. And with that would be that we have a request for a special permit to allow a new garage to be constructed in lieu of the existing non-conforming garage that was demolished prior to this foundation being put in. And let me back up a little bit. There is a foundation in the ground. So Mr. Soars was, found out that he needed zoning relief when the building department asked him for Foundation Asheville. He had hired a surveyor, not my company, another survey to go out, do the Foundation Asheville, submitted it, and then at that time, the building department told him, whoa, wait a minute. This garage can't sit on this lot by itself, very similar to the South Coast situation, where a garage as an accessory use would have been fine. But in this A2 district, very similarly, cannot have a private garage that is the primary use. So my first argument with regards to the special permit would be that there was a non-conforming garage that sat on the property. And we would ask that this new construction and the demolition of that other garage would not be substantially more detrimental than the garage that sat there before. So with regards to the use itself of having a garage on this property, that is a use that had historically been occupying this parcel. Structure itself, separate issue. We get into a potential, another special permit with the size of this garage structure. When you read through the sections of, is it 86, 466, I believe it is?
Yes.
They limit the size of what a garage structure can be. And through a special permit, you're allowed for that garage structure to be larger than that 750 square feet, which this garage is 950 square feet. So 200 square feet larger than what we would have allowed for a garage. So if the board would see fit to move this in the vein of a special permit, then I feel that they could do so in that we have a non-conforming use of land, which was the original garage. We have a non-conforming structure other than a single or two-family structure. And under both of those sections, 424 and 425, the board can make the determination that the expansion, alteration, or change of those two non-conformities can be done so with a special permit if you find that it's not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformity, which was the existing garage and trailer that currently sat on the property. So that's one section. And then we get, again, to the second portion, an additional special permit that would allow a garage structure larger than 750 square feet to occupy this parcel. Now, I wish that Mr. Soars had come to me before he put this foundation in, and we probably could have handled this a little bit differently or come to you in a different manner. However, that's not the case. So we have filed the after-the-fact filing fee and all of the filing fees for special permits to allow us to come back before you. So we are hoping that the board allows this petition to move forward. If the special permit is not granted, I would request that you allow me to give an argument with regards to hardship in an attempt that maybe you could allow this to happen by the granting of a variance.
My question at this point is that we're showing on the plan proposed garage...
Correct.
Dwelling.
Oh, sorry. That should not be on there. It is not, that's a cut and paste error. This is not a dwelling at all. And if I could just add a little bit, a little bit more background, Mr. Soars' mother owns the property to the north, and the garage that currently sits on that property is going to be moved onto this one. And that's what kind of dictated the size of the structure. So what they want, they're going to get rid of the garage on the property to the north, but that's really, has no bearing on your decision. But just logistically, I would just want to explain, that's what determined the size of this, was that the structure is coming off of I2316 and being placed on the foundation that...
Wouldn't that make an easier argument that this lot's going to get combined with the other one belongs to...
That's what I'm going to get to. So Mr. Soars' mom owns 363. However, there are a group of siblings...
There you go.
That own the property, that will accept the property separate from Mr. Soars individually. Mr. Soars owns I2317 individually and not understanding the complexities of ownership different parcel, even though it abuts it. It's a separate parcel and it stands alone. And that's why I'm saying, you know, the fact that we're moving this garage from this other parcel, and I had told them, it would all be a lot easier if this was just merged. We're not at that point. We may get to that point sometime, but as of right now, Mr. Soars only has title and ownership to this 55 by 59-foot parcel.
Yeah, well, I was looking around. Is the Ferreras to the... Yeah, well, I was looking around, is the Ferreras to the west, and I'm saying, is it the same guy? But this lot existed by itself.
Always existed by itself, and I actually appeared before you ten years ago to try and construct a single-family home.
On this lot?
Yep. It was, I forgot what the guy's name was, because I was aggravated that I couldn't find the plan, so I had to do it over again. Because it would have been a lot easier if I could just revise the plan. But it was that long ago on a different computer. I know Terry Hayes was involved there, but Thompson maybe was the name. I don't remember what it was, but it didn't pass for the construction of a single-family home. However, I would say that since, you know, there was a garage structure.
When you talk about the foundation, let's talk about.
Yes.
That wasn't an existing foundation.
No, this is a new foundation.
This is a, that's what I'm asking. I'm sure it's magnificent.
I go up to it and I said, Norbert, I said, it's so well-done. I said, but we got to go before the zoning board of appeals. And that's what the building department instructed him to call me. And I said, we'll put together the best argument that we can, and luckily, there was an existing structure on the property utilized as a garage.
When, no idea when that.
It was demolished just as this foundation was going in. So two thousand and twenty, I think you said it was, like, just as he.
Well, he just closed.
Right, but he had.
Twenty, twenty-one.
But he was friends with the owner, so it was there within.
So when did the other one go down?
When he took it down. Just prior to.
You bought it, wait a minute, you bought it in March and you took the existing structure down?
Prior to, right. What was the date? Do you remember roughly when you took that one down?
Once I purchased it, a couple days later.
That was a two thousand and twenty aerial that I got, so it came down after two thousand and twenty.
No, no, that's what I'm, that's what I can't, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Is when he, when he closed and purchased the property.
He bought it for a dollar from when I didn't write down.
New foundation went in when? Just after that?
Yeah, just after that.
Okay. So the demolition was, you demolished the other building prior to buying it?
No, once I bought it, it was a couple days later.
Okay, so it was in two thousand and twenty-one then?
Yes.
So what I explained to Mr. Soers was, I said, if you hadn't demolished the existing structure, we, you know, it would have been a little bit, help our argument a little bit to go and ask for this permission before he went and did it. The building inspector, the building department in general, has been very good to deal with. You know, they told him, you need a foundation as built, but they didn't know that this sat by itself.
That's, well, kind of that's where I'm going. You've got the A-two district, which is causing a major problem for him. And the fact that his, the argument about, again, it's in his name and the other one has lots of other names, so really there isn't merger with it. But boy, it would be a real easy, you wouldn't be here if he had, here you go, here's it going up, and maybe the only relief that you need is the size.
Right.
Versus a standalone lot in the A-two district with a garage.
And I explained that we had this, I mean, we had this discussion that, but the family is not at the point now where he's available to take title to the property. It's families. We all have.
I know all about it.
I have them too.
So use, it's a, it's a storage garage? It's going to be for cars?
Yeah, it's a storage.
It's not a commercial use?
No, not a commercial use. Again, very similar.
I know, but you hear what he just said.
Or not substantially.
I moved the one from the mother's house to this one.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, but it stands alone on its own lot.
Yeah, no, that's where my.
The zoning relief is the zoning.
That's where I'm like, ah!
It could fall from.
Correct.
And it's still on its own lot.
That's why I'm almost saying, you know, table it or withdraw it and come back when you get the other thing settled, because, I don't know, you can do what you want to do. I'm just looking at it and saying. But there are four other men that need to look at it and vote on it, not just me. But okay.
So how close are you to resolution with the family?
It might not, I mean, it could be ten years from now, but we're not even close.
They're not there.
Yeah.
That's what you're hearing, Joe.
Right. One thing I can say is that the building was constructed to the required setbacks for a garage structure under section eighty-six, four sixty-six. Thank goodness. So it meets the.
Except eighty-six, four sixty-six always deals or contemplates that it's part of.
Correct.
Part of.
That's separate.
A property that's.
The accessory use is, the use is different. I'm just saying that it met the setbacks for if it was an adjacent.
If it was, and if they had ten thousand square feet, and if he had a house, it would be beautiful.
Yeah, one story, it's not going to be an apartment above?
No, absolutely not. One story.
We just got rid of the dwelling part of it.
And again, it's very important, it's very important when we discuss the special permit process of this, that there was this same nonconforming use on the property previous.
Was.
And historically.
Was.
Correct. Well, it's been within two years, so the grandfathering is still, is still there, but the structure is gone.
Okay. Do you want to keep, do you want to do that part first, see if you can get past a special permit?
Yeah.
And then if not, I'll let you do the variance, see if you can, okay? So Dan's proposal is, he wants a special permit. Well, I didn't ask the director, assistant director. Do you have some comments on this particular?
I have no comments on this one.
Okay.
It's an interesting one.
It is.
What did I tell you?
Particular.
I said it's probably one of the most interesting ones I've ever had in twenty-eight years.
So that's, so the special permit part of it under, what is it, eighty-six, four-twenty-four?
It would be four-twenty-four, four-twenty-five, and four-sixty.
Does he meet, do they have a noncon, I guess it's going to be a nonconforming use of the land.
Yes.
It's going to be, the board of appeals may grant the special permit to change or expand the nonconforming use in accordance with the section, only if it determines that such a change or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood. So what we've got is, I'm listening, that there was.
What's the use?
That there was a garage, but there's no garage. It's gone. Yeah, no, no, I got it. So you're doing the same thing I'm doing.
That's why I told Mr. Soers if we had come in while that garage was still standing, that's why I offered, I don't know if David can pass along the aerial photo that I gave you?
Yeah.
That shows the existing garage and existing cabin.
I'm just saying, the use, the.
The use is gone.
The use.
It is non-existent.
But the use that you're asking for.
Yep.
Is.
Garage.
Yeah, you got it, Joe.
Standalone.
Standalone garage, just like there was a standalone garage. A week before the foundation went in.
But, so, it has to exist if we're going to consider this. It's in the A-two district, which doesn't allow it.
Yep.
So.
Yes, it's an existing nonconforming use and nonconforming structure.
What do you want to do? Is it a special permit or do you need to go forward with a variance if you can sustain that? But can you get by the special permit aspect of this particular project? So.
It's nonconformity.
No, you got it. You all got your heads around it. You know what it is. So if you don't think it is, then the answer is no, and let's move on to the variance part, see if he can convince you that they shape, topography, soil condition is such that. But if not, deal with the special permit. So do you think that he's got it? Do I have a motion to grant, motion to deny the request for a special permit?
What is the technical aspect of the two-year grant?
Well, I don't, well, he's saying the two, I don't know, the two years would.
Nonconforming uses have a grandfathering of two years in existence. So just like if we were to take the ice cream shop, it hadn't been an ice cream shop for two years. So the existing nonconforming use of an ice cream shop had gone away. Then the nonconforming use that exists there now was the storage facility. So the fact that there was a nonconforming use of this property being the existing garage, if that garage stood within the last two years, then that grandfather, even though the structure doesn't stand, you can make an argument that the nonconforming use of the property has been in existence.
Right.
Within the last two years.
And we've done that before.
So if you can't get past that component of it, then there's no need to move forward with anything else.
The dwelling is the part that bothers me.
All right, and I apologize.
And the garage next door is two stories, and it's got an apartment above it, so.
There will not be, and in our petition, it is for a garage. It is not, you can put any condition in the world that it's a one-story garage and that there is to be no dwelling unit within it. That's, I mean, that's clear, cut, and dry.
Then it means deconstructing the upper part of the garage that's being moved.
That's, or leave it, or leave it open.
That's pie in the sky.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not.
Again, the adjacent garage, as I stated, is not really part of what we're asking you. That's logistics and.
Right.
And the whole story of it, but really not germane to the zoning relief being requested. But I can guarantee you that there was, this is not to be a dwelling.
Well, that could be stipulated.
Absolutely.
Was there a demolition permit?
I do not know. I'm guessing not.
Because I don't remember seeing, when I was doing it, looking at it, that there were the assessors.
Well, what I did was, in my package, in my package, I did, I did include to you the previous assessments, where they do list yard items, outbuilding, up until two thousand and twenty-one. So it is historically.
The extra, the extra, the only thing that that shows up that I see is this extra feature value of seventeen hundred.
Right, but when you look at code, it's outbuilding, which means there's an existing structure of an outbuilding on a property.
And if I look at this, I'm not sure what the, I got it, I understand.
Can you show your eye there?
Eighty-six, four-twenty-eight, the abandonment, non-use, a nonconforming use or structure that has been abandoned or not used for a period of two years shall lose its protected status and be subject to all the provisions of this chapter, notwithstanding the above a nonconforming structure that has been abandoned. So we don't have a structure or not used for a period of two years, may reestablish its protected status upon request. So we don't have a structure, so uppercase B doesn't work. So uppercase A is really where Dan's coming from, a nonconforming use or structure that has been abandoned or not used for a period of two years shall lose its protected status and be subject to all the provisions of this chapter. So again, this, looking at the property assessment card, if this is for two thousand and twenty, let me see if I can find it on here. And we take.
If you go to the previous assessment sheet and you see the top year of two thousand and twenty-one, that labels it as outbuilding.
Two thousand and twenty, outbuilding, seventeen hundred dollars, seven, yeah. So there may have been something there that.
Oh, it was not in great shape.
No, I don't care, no, I, forget about it. I don't care about the shape.
Right.
Let's just establish the fact that if there was something out there, then you go back to this abandoned, abandonment or non-use, the nonconforming use of a structure that has been abandoned or not used for a period of two years, shall lose its protected status. So if we say it was there, then it may, then the structure or the use may be considered as non-abandoned. Then you get into now this particular foundation and what the other one was, do we have an expansion of it and is that more detrimental to the neighborhood under four-twenty-four when you go from whatever it was, a small garage into this nine-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot unit? So. Which one? The abandonment? Abandonment was. I'm sorry, yeah, I'm very quick and I can't keep the numbers. That's what happens when you get old. Four-twenty-eight, I think is what it was. Four-twenty-three, four-twenty-six, four-twenty-eight. Section eighty-six, four-twenty-eight, abandoned or non-use, uppercase A, a nonconforming use. So that's, part of the argument is that there was something there, the assessor's records put it out, but I don't think, you don't have the size, but this thing is saying nine-hundred-and-fifty square feet, so, and you have it in this A-two district. So if you think that, yes, it complies and it's an expansion, then somebody make a motion to grant. If you think that it's too big in the A-two district, then it doesn't fly.
Mr. Chairman, can we take each section, a vote on each section?
No.
No? You want to do the whole thing as one rigmarole?
I would think, I mean, by if you get away, is it this, then we got this?
Well, no, that, the use is one thing. And get past that and then deal with the size.
No, no, but listen, if you go with the use part.
Yep.
I think that's what gets you to, and if you don't have.
Well, just dealing with the nine-hundred-and-fifty square feet on its own. The size, that's a separate special permit. The size.
Yes, with it. Yes, but you first have to get by the.
That's what I'm saying, is that can we do, can we take the size of it as a separate vote?
If we get, I think that's going to be part of it. The first part has to be, was there, based on the assessors, was there a use? And if there was a use, now you're asking for this particular use, which I think has to include the nine-hundred-and-fifty under four-twenty-four, that the special permit to change or, if we say that there was no use, if we say that's no good, I don't care whether it's a thousand square feet or seven-hundred-and-fifty standalone lot, you're not going to get the special.
That's what I'm saying, is so if we get past, is the use part of it okay? Then we can deal with the size.
Yes.
Separate.
I think that's where I'm going.
Right, well, no. I don't want, you don't lump it all in as one.
So you get the two, no, but you get the two pieces.
Yes.
If you think that we've got a use that existed, then that gives you the, I think, to come and ask, say, this is what I wanted to expand what was there.
Right, and the direction that I'm going is if you agree that the use and the overall expansion is fine, we theoretically could, size-wise, if we were at seven-fifty.
Oh, I don't think that's how that goes. No, I don't think that's how, I'm going to strike.
If it was more palatable.
I got it, but I don't think, I don't know, listen, that's just me.
Yep.
I mean, the board can tell me, they can tell me this, and we're going to grant it, do what you're going to do. But I don't think that's how that works.
Okay. You're the chairman.
At least, oh, I am the chairman.
So you're the.
But we're trying, listen, I'm the chairman, we try to do it the right way.
Absolutely.
We try to make sure that we do it by the numbers. This, nothing arbitrary or capricious.
What I was just stating was that if the whole project as a whole would be more palatable.
Yes.
If we reduce the size to seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, would that be more palatable to the board? And if that one, if that would be a condition of a motion, it's something that we would accept.
I got it.
We'd have to move a wall, but for the sake of salvaging something, we would be going to do that.
Thank you. Members of the board, what do you want to do? So if you say that under uppercase A of eighty-six, four-twenty-eight, that there was this nonconforming use on the property, that it's been abandoned and not been used for a period of two years, shall lose its protected status and be subject to all the provisions. So he's saying, no, there was a use, and it hasn't been two years, so I can still have the use of a garage on the property. So then you say, okay, we get, we get to that part, so if we want to make a finding.
Yeah, my only question is abandoned or, so that the property was abandoned, so does that whole rest of that get struck?
So, so let's read the sentence. A nonconforming use or structure that has been abandoned, oh, comma, commas are important, or not used for a period of two years, comma, shall lose its protected status and be subject to all the provisions of this chapter. So reading the sentence.
I mean, it was never abandoned, I mean, it was utilized-
It was knocked down.
If it was knocked down, yeah.
I, I guess it depends on what you mean by abandoned, yeah.
So, reading the sentence, and I'm glad you brought that up with the comma versus just, a non-conforming use or structure that has been abandoned, comma, or not used for a period of two years, shall lose its protected status and be subject to all of the, all of the provisions of this chapter.
Yeah.
So if I read the sentence as fifth grade English, and say, the comma tells me that it's been abandoned or not used, then the abandonment of it or the removal of what was there knocks it out of the eighty-six, four, twenty-eight section.
If abandon, if destruction accounts or equates, equates to abandon, yeah.
It has to be abandoned, I guess the logic of it is if it's abandoned, if you remove it, then it's abandoned.
Yeah.
And if you did it simultaneously, overlapped it, I'm moving it, I get the permit, I'm doing it together, then maybe it's not.
Yeah, that, that or, it's-
Okay. So if that's your reading of it, then I guess you should make a motion, or someone should make a motion that they don't meet the, the element of eighty-six, four, twenty-eight.
I, I think under our current definition, I would move that we find that it does not meet the requirements of that section.
Okay. All right. So Jim Corkins makes that motion, that he doesn't think that eighty-six, four, twenty-eight, under uppercase A, the first part doesn't meet because of the removal of the, whatever was there, was considered abandoned or gone, therefore, that argument can't work for the special permit to work for eighty-six, four, twenty-four to get the non-conforming use of land. Okay? So that's, do I have a second on Jim's motion?
Second.
Second, John Frank. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Yep, Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. So that part and the special permit aspects go, like, you want to make your petition special for your variance?
Um, I would actually, I would request that you allow us to withdraw the variance portion of the petition, only in case the applicant needs some other type of zoning relief on the property, that we would not have to go through the whole process again.
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice, please. In case some type of merger does happen and some type of other relief is needed, I wouldn't want to have to muddy the waters.
No, so if you-
I, I don't believe the board would be moving in a positive direction, in the, in the vein of a variance.
So let's think about this, so the special permit, a drop will allow you, so how is this going to work, the special permit's denied, is that going to-
You can just leave it at that.
No, no, I, I got it, but I'm trying to think what that's going to do, withdrawing the variance without prejudice for the board allows it.
Well, you just don't even have to act on the variance part of it.
No, no, I got that, but thinking your way, my way through-
Yep.
Maybe I shouldn't care about what happens, but I'll do. If you try to bring it again, will the special permit kick in and prevent you under forty-eight, section sixteen, and say, no, it's the same thing, special permit variance?
Well, no, special permits and variance are in time, and that's why I don't want to, I don't want to contaminate both. We took a shot at the special permit, I don't want to, I have the variance create an additional roadblock down the-
So we have the motion that's coming up right now to withdraw the, that part of it with the variance, to be withdrawn without prejudice.
I move that we grant permission to withdraw the variance request without prejudice.
Okay, Jim Corkins makes the motion to withdraw without prejudice for the variance part. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, John Frank, any discussion on the motion?
No.
Yes? Did you say?
No.
Oh, no, okay. John Frank?
Yes.
Yeah, Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. So that takes care of that.
Second, another one to do.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, let's see, last item for the Reunion Properties LLC, three forty-one Quikashan, Lebanon, Quikashan Street, Lebanon Street, Quarry Streets, Lot K eight seventeen twenty-six, variance request to construct four two-unit townhouses with associated pockets at a rate of two spaces per unit, waiving dimensional requirements in the A-two district. So that goes with that one. And this is this, did you, did you do a Form A claim for that?
Yes.
Plus, because it shows up and it says new parcel, and you had me chasing my-
Yeah, because then, that's why we call it a part of K eight twenty-six, so it was a Form A and merger with the-
No, no, I got it, but it said, I got it.
Good evening, again for the record, Dan Aguirre from SciTech CEC, here this evening on behalf of Reunion Properties LLC, who is the new owner of this new parcel, consisting of twenty-six thousand square feet and three hundred and four feet of frontage along Lebanon, one hundred and eleven feet along Quarry Street, and ninety feet along Quikashan Street. This parcel is comprised of a, of two different parcels. One, it would have been where the existing warehouse stands at three forty-one Quikashan, which was K eight seventeen, which is at the corner of Quikashan Street and Lebanon Street. And that square par, parcel was merged with some land that was sold and combined from K eight twenty-six, which would be the All Lady of Lights Band Club to the south. So their frontage along Lebanon Street, which is behind their bandstand, along that elevated portion of Lebanon Street, was combined with three forty-one Quikashan, creating that one hundred foot wide swath running along Lebanon. So the applicant purchased this property just in September, and the proposal before you is to construct four duplex units. The use of the property, the density of the property, completely comply with the A-two district. We are charged with having ten thousand square feet plus two thousand square feet for an additional unit, for a total of twenty-four thousand square feet required in the A-two district for eight units. We exceed that by twenty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine, so the size of the parcel conforms with regards-
You don't exceed it by twenty-six thousand.
Right. What's that?
You don't exceed it by twenty-six thousand.
No, sorry, by, by, by two thousand, it's been a long night, this. Um, my memory is not as sharp as it used to be either.
No, mine either.
By the time I get through eight of these, I'm going to start talking about ice cream shops and that.
It's the first time I've seen you turn red.
All right. So we have frontage requirement of one hundred feet, where we exceed that along Lebanon and along Quarry, being three hundred and four feet along Lebanon and one hundred and eleven feet along Quarry Street. The relief that we're here seeking this evening is with regards to building setbacks, where in the A-two district, we have a required front yard setback of thirty feet, required side yard of twenty feet, and a minimum rear yard of thirty feet, and a lot coverage of thirty. With regards to lot coverage, this parcel is about ninety percent impervious now, so moving forward with our proposal, we're going to be introducing a great amount of green space to this facility, so we don't need any relief with regards to lot coverage. The relief we are seeking is with regards to front yard, we are asking for a fifteen foot yard setback in lieu of the required thirty, a side yard of fifteen feet, which would be the setback to Quikashan Street, where twenty feet would normally be required, and a rear yard for a couple of the buildings to be at twenty feet where thirty feet is required. And the reasoning behind this requested relief has to do with the topography of the lot, where we have an existing retaining wall along Lebanon Street that's three feet high, and as you all know, and you can see from the corner of Quarry and Lebanon-
Did you measure it, three feet? I think it's higher than three feet.
No, it's about three feet, because it's about three steps when we get down the end. You think it's higher than three? Yes?
Chairman had his first communion party there.
I did.
Yeah, you did, well, you know, it, it was, what was it?
My fingerprints are all over this three forty-one Quikashan.
It was, I mean, that building, three forty-one, it was-
That was Lebanon American-
Lebanese something or other club, yeah.
Not something or other, I mean-
Well, thanks, you can explain it.
Go ahead, no, I'm trying, I'm trying to make sure I participate, risen again.
So, so we have a site, because of its elevation, and it's elevated for reasons, because the site is predominantly ledge, and you see that outcrop at the corner of Lebanon Street and Quarry. So we had looked at a few different uses of what we could do with this property, expanding the commercial use, single-family homes, I explained to the owner, why don't you just do what's allowed in the A-two district, which is apartments? We have the area requirements, we have the frontage requirements, we will need some setback requirements because of how the construction and the size of the structures need to take place on this parcel of land. We will meet the parking requirements of two spaces per unit, and that will be through the reconstruction of a parking lot up to the northwest corner of the property. So the only relief we're here to seeking this evening is with regards to front yard setback, side yard setback, and rear yard setback. And when you look at the neighborhood as a whole, directly across the street, for instance, all of those multifamily dwellings are actually built like right on the street line. This is a parcel of land that I'm sure you've all been by many times, it's, it's been underutilized for many years as the club's membership, similar to academic, or these social clubs, the days of these things has, have diminished, so the need for this vast parking area that's growing up weeds and not utilized, and then when we look at the condition and the use of what's happening, or what has happened at that warehouse at the corner, um-
Every time you say warehouse, it just, I know, I know it's-
But that's what it is, that's what they're using it for, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, because, listen, the club uses expire, it's been more than two years. We can go back to section forty-six, three, four, one, six, nine, where, where that's going, I can't argue that.
No, it is, it's being used as a warehouse, I just-
It's all about history.
It is.
It's all about history.
Ricky, you know, Ricky, you're probably right, we did have our first communion.
Well, then you, then you would be disgusted with the condition of the interior.
I don't want to hear about it. We'll see where it's going to go.
Yeah.
But the, the, the court, I don't know what was the call, the headstone or whatever, is when they do the demolition, I want to see if I can get my hands on it.
I'm sure we can make that happen, I'm sure.
Because the building's going down.
It's going down, yes, absolutely.
I, I think maybe we're going to put a condition and have to put a-
But listen, but if you're going to put a, well, if you're going to put a sign up in the A-two district, we're going to need a special permit, and I know now we can do that, so.
Is the sign going to be a memory of the club or your first communion party?
Listen, listen, he still has-
When the boat sailed up the Quikashan River and the grandparents got off, I still am like a mile and a half from where they stopped, I mean, so-
He doesn't have the cards, he still has the cash, and he still has the bonds that he got, because he thinks even after seven years, he's going to get more money.
Oh, that's no question about that.
After seven years, they're done, that's all you can get.
Just, just don't go dig down the backyard of four thirty-nine Quikashan, tomato cans with a hundred dollar bill with petroleum in it.
So, so with the project as a whole, I think this would be a great infusion of some new construction to the area, adequate parking, green space, where we see this blighted, elevated ledge parking facility. And, and, and the history of, of the Lebanon Club can continue on in some form or fashion.
Thank you, Dan.
So the, the front doors are going to be facing Lebanon Street?
Lebanon, that's why we've, we've proposed an existing, proposed sidewalk-
I see the walk, I just want to make sure they're not facing that.
Because that sits higher. I wish we could just utilize the sidewalk out front, but then we'd be busting through walls, and we'd like to keep the wall as it is, and these are, these need to be built at that elevation because of the ledge, they won't have basins.
No, you're not going to get down, you're not going to get through that.
No.
Uh, two bedrooms, three bedrooms?
I'm not sure of the density, so I, I really wouldn't want to limit, I say no more than three, for sure, but again, they haven't gone to that point of, of architecture. Well, we're not asking for a reduction in parking, I don't see the need for a reduction in the number of bedrooms, but, but we could cap it at three bedrooms per unit.
Okay.
The construction, parking, lighting, landscaping, what all those were-
Cyclops, view cyclops. Okay, I see Mr. Carlos Caesar here, there's input, but is there anybody else?
You do have a letter from the club as well.
I do, there's, well, there's a letter from the offices, All Lady of Light Band Club, six sixty-four Quarry Street, we look forward to the vacant property finally being cleaned up and developed, as it will no longer be an eyesore to the neighborhood.
We actually weren't, we actually weren't sure how they were going to, to view the project, because the property was purchased without their knowledge of what was proposed.
Oh, without, yes, but I, I'm-
So, so we were glad that they were in support.
My recollection, not that I've not walked on memory lane, but they bought the, they bought-
Yes.
Lebanon American Club from, I think it was Tony Alberto or something.
Yes. In separate names, did you read through all the names of ownership of all these different parcels?
No, I don't want to go through it, because my fingerprints are all over it from-
Well, no, because there's All Lady of Light Band Club Inc., there's All Lady of, of Lights, so there's, there are actually like three separate entities that, which was good.
So let me see what Mr. Carlos Caesar has to say about this project for the neighborhood.
I just want to thank the board, first of all, for me getting the agenda, just giving me opportunity, at least to hear, you know, the, the plans for the, for that. I'm not against, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm glad that finally we're going to do something with that piece of land that's been sitting in there for years. We always have a concern is traffic, you know, that's one of the concerns, but I don't think that's going to, that's going to create like a huge difference on that area. It is a tough street, Quikashan Street, it is a tough street. Matter of fact, in our meeting in Ju, in July, we got, we got requests to go on the traffic board meeting for the month of August, requesting a stop sign at the end of Quikashan Streets, with meets with Alden Streets, just because of people not obeying the stop sign in Quikashan Street.
On Alden Street.
Have the highway of, on-
Yeah, there's a tough corner.
And it's been, it's been accidents there. Either people not obeying the stop, or people having really to stick out into Quikashan to have a better view, and it's too late, so, and that request was denied, so it is a, a, you know, a little bit of traffic over there, especially-
Yes.
During school time, because we have the schools from CFC over there and, and everything. But other than that, you know, I have nothing against, I, you know, again, we need to move on, we need to, don't forget the history, that's very important, not to forget the history there, but moving on, because if we go back thirty or forty years, we had, we had all kinds of countries living together in a very small area, and we all got along, the French, the Portuguese, the Lebanese, you call it. So, but other than that, again, thank you for, for the board sending me the agenda, so this way when I log to agenda, I like to at least come down and hear the, the presentation, so this way, if I got a call with a question about the project, at least I have some information to pass it on.
You can always call Ms. Alex.
But I, I've been getting, and again, thank you for getting the agenda.
Thank you for coming out this evening, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just in a quick response, the only vehicular access to the site will be through the existing driveway on Quarry, so we shouldn't be adding any congestion to the Quikashan-Alden intersection.
Yeah, no, there shouldn't be any, I mean, you know, three steps going up on Quikashan Street to go off, I don't know, someone may park there, but-
And I believe it's a one-way street too, right?
What, Lebanon Street, also formerly known as Bernard Street is a one-way.
Do you see that?
Yeah.
I was just going to ask you, do you know what it was called before, but then I saw that I wrote out a plant?
Yes, yeah, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the variance.
Okay, we have a motion to grant the variance as presented. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by John Frank. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. All right, good luck.
Thank you all very much.
Site, oh, yeah.
You will, if you have any first communion artifacts, you will follow them.
Yes.
Yeah, I think I may, I think my, we might have some eight millimeter video walking down the farm.
Listen, my, my kids to this day, so, so I grew up at St. Peter and Paul Church, not a Lebanese church, but a nice Portuguese church, and that's where I went to school. So my first communion, and I don't know why, all Portuguese kids always wear white suits.
Yeah, yeah.
My parents put me in a rust-colored suit, like, more rust than your tie, okay, like hardcore rust, and I don't know whether they got it from, and it, wherever we got, Anderson Little or whatever it was, the most horrific thing, but back at that time, it was at, probably seventy-six maybe, maybe that was the thing, but not for communions. My kids to this day, they will throw out comments, because they've seen pictures, they will throw out comments about rust, they'll see somebody in a rust outfit, or this and that, it's constant. I think I'm the only kid that ever wore a rust-colored suit.
I think your father got a deal out some fabric from Durof in his, in that day.
It might be, I think it might have been my grandfather's funeral suit, and I think they just yanked it off.
I bet it was Amazonia.
Yeah, you know what, I think that's what it was, yeah.
So do we have any citizen input? No. Approval of the minutes of September sixteen, twenty twenty-one meeting, we thought it was right, I remember reading something. Motion to approve the minute, motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes as prepared.
So moved.
Second by Jim Cork, second by Jim Cork. Motion by Jim Cork and second by-
Second.
Second by Dan Dupere, any discussion on the motion? None. John Frank, yes?
I was not, I was not here.
Yes. Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Yes? Dan Dupere?
Dan actually can't vote either.
Why can't you vote?
Because he wasn't here.
All right, so who was here for that, I mean, you weren't there, so, so the three of us by quorum, yes, okay, they're done.
Rick was here.
Rick, you were here?
He wasn't, he voted, yeah.
Okay, so Rick, Rick Sahady, yes. I don't, I don't want to run a file of any open meeting law with my friend Patrick Higgins, so let's make sure we have the vote on the record. So for the members that were here, it was-
Yes.
Jim Corkins, yes, Chairman Assad, yes, Joe Pereira, yes, and alternate member Ricky Sahady, who is here, yes? Yes. Okay. So we got a, an open meeting law complaint, and I think it was emailed on October third.